We're having one technical issue.
Good morning, and thank you for joining us. I am Teri Lucas, the board liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on Board Docs. The link can be found on our website, calbright.org/Board. For those public attendees who wish to make public comment via Zoom, please use the Q and A feature to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comments should be used to address today's agenda. And a reminder that this board reading is being recorded. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, would you please call the role?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Here.
Amy Costa.
Here.
Tom Epstein. Pam Haynes.
Here.
Jelena Grande. Jennifer Perry. Bill Rawlings.
Present.
We have a quorum. President Costa.
Thanks so much, Teri. With that, I'd like to ask Vice President Aguinaldo to lead us in the pledge.
Honor, please place your right hand over your heart and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So much. With that, colleagues, does anybody have any discussion regarding the order of the agenda? Great. Seeing none, we will just jump right into it. We'll start with the president's report. As always, I'll keep it brief. I just want to highlight in one of our agenda items a little bit further along. We're going to get an update on our milestone report, a statutory requirement about where we are against some of the goals that were set out in our founding legislation. And for those of us who have been here since the beginning, when Calbright was just an idea, it's really remarkable. And I think we should all be proud. It's simply, none of it would be possible without the staff of Calbright or the Calbright students. And what's really exciting to me is we are beginning to hear some of those students' stories. We're beginning to understand the value and the power of Calbright in their lives. And so anyway, it's very exciting for me personally, colleagues, I think it is for each of you who have also, the four of us all been here since the beginning. So anyway, I'm just really looking forward to that, to see kind of the beginning of the fruition of all of the hard work on behalf of us and our students. With that, I'll turn it over to our CEO for her report.
Thank you, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the Calbright College Board of Trustees. In my two remarks, I projected that the new fiscal year would quickly overshadow our successes from last year. And in late July, I was thrilled to receive news that the Districts Education Accredited Commission that Calbright was granted initial accreditation. That's a year and a half ahead of schedule, ahead of the April 2025 deadline in our founding legislation. This momentous milestone is the largest, single largest accomplishment in our short history. It's not only the recognition of the hard work of our faculty or students and staff, but it's a critical consumer protection that really validates the integrity and quality of our academic programs and operations. In the short term, we're shifting our digital enterprise over to .edu. And in the longer term, we will begin discussions with the board about next steps for planning and implementation of things like accepting credit students earn from other institutions and offering credit for our programs that can transfer outside of Calbright to give our students more opportunities to translate their validated skills into both the labor market and the education market. Today, I'm also pleased to bring the board, bring to the board Calbright's 2023-2024 fiscal year budget for formal adoption. This is the final stage in a months-long collaborative process between the Calbright team and the board. And as President Biden often says, "Show me your budget, and I will tell you your values." I am very proud of our plan for this year. We will continue to invest in our student-centered design, in really building college around the needs and the goals of our learners. And this means more members of the holistic student support team, including faculty and staff, more technology experts who build and maintain our platforms that our community uses on a daily basis and supports our students and the Calbright team, and more investment in infrastructure and partnerships for teaching and learning to catalyze our progress throughout the second half of our startup period. Our budget reflects our collaboration with both faculty and staff labor unions and the critical need to expand our operational capacity as enrollment increases. And also includes a sustained investment in research and development, critical to carrying out our statutory mission in our mandate. As the leading edge of the learning curve for supporting adult learners, it's the rapid iteration and constant evaluation of our operation that's part of our DNA. Instead of a secondary component that exists on the margins of what we do every day, we are proactively seeking out experimentation and optimization, all driving towards stronger outcomes for our learners. Which is why, later in this meeting, I'm also looking forward to discussing a unique opportunity we have to partner with Smith Futures, Georgia State University, and other leading entities in the education innovation field to sponsor a tools competition that is exclusively focused on leveraging learning science, technology, data science, behavioral science, machine learning, and artificial intelligence to strengthen outcomes for our learners. Though common in practice at research universities and the private sector, our community colleges are too often behind the curve for best practices that spark progress and haven't really been set up to be nimble and responsive to drive needed public sector innovation, despite having the most to gain for the diverse learners we seek to serve well. At the heart of this effort is this urgent need to disrupt the business as usual, to aggregate and leverage the best innovations out there to solve for the complex equation of how we create success in the lives of our working learners, to do it at scale. We'll seek pitches over the next year from companies, organizations, research groups with the most promising tools to advance adult learner success. And while this competition and this opportunity to broaden the reach and scope of our work with organizations that we may choose to partner with is exciting on its own, it's actually the timing of this endeavor that's also key. The system-wide Vision 2030 roadmap calls for special attention and investment in adult workers in Calbright's core duty body, not just in their enrollment, but in their successes, which carry through to the labor market. This tools competition is well-aligned with all these priorities as we lean into institutional and systematic optimization for greater effectiveness and greater efficiency that's required for us to create change in a state as large as California. We need to act now so that the greatest number of students can benefit. So then these new partnerships and innovation can be built directly into the scaffolding of our startup period and be fully operational when we have 5,000 students and 10,000 students. Today is the first of many steps in this initiative, and I'm excited for the opportunities to engage with the expertise of the board throughout this process. And also, as we explore aligned interests with philanthropic and economic development entities to achieve these common goals. With full accreditation, three program schedules launched before the end of 2023, new workforce partnerships under development, and the next version of our strategic vision on the way. And I cannot forget a growing team across Calbright dedicated to the goals and needs of our students. Our momentum is palpable, and we are less than two months into the new academic year. I want to thank President Costa and members of the Board Executive Committee. This concludes my remarks.
Thank you so much. There is no closed session today, therefore you will move on to the three portion of the agenda, the consent agenda. Do any trustees wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion or a separate vote? Seeing none, is there any public comment on the consent agenda?
There is no public comment. President Costa.
Thank you. With that, I will entertain a motion in a second.
Move the item.
Rawlings, was that a second?
Yes, it is.
Awesome. With that, can you please call the role?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Costa.
Wonderful. Next, we'll move on to the action portion of the agenda. And first up, we have item 4.1, the public hearing and adoption of the fiscal year 2023-2024 final budget, presented by our Chief Financial Officer.
Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of Board of Trustees. Today's presentation is the public hearing for comments and adoption of the fiscal year 2023-2024 annual budget. Next slide, please. The agenda for today's meeting includes the following: projected fiscal year 2023 financial update of the actuals, Calbright overview, budget presentation and timeline, and the 2023-2024 final budget, which includes the budget assumptions, final budget, and next steps. Next slide, please. First, I'd like to review our projected year-end actual results for fiscal year 2023. Next slide, please. This page shows our initial projection of our actual results, given that we have 11 months of actual data and are completing the final months worth of accruals and other adjustments to result in a full year's activity. The total revenue of $16.7 million considers the general apportionment of $15 million plus the projected interest income of $1.6 million as of year-end. For the expenses, our overall actual expenses are lower than our budget projection. As stated in the draft budget meeting in June, the difference is due to the timing of when the expenses will occur versus according to the 2023 budget. This is especially evident in the expenses for employee compensation and other expenses. The fiscal year 2023 budget assumes that these expenses for items such as employee compensation and other operating expenses, including payments to contractors, consultants, and other subject matter experts, would occur by 6/30/23. These payments are still projected to occur, but the timing of the actual payments will probably occur in fiscal year 2024 or beyond. Next slide, please. Next is our Calbright overview. This, the Calbright College Fiscal Year 2023-2024 Annual Budget represents the strategic goals for 2024. It's based on an explicit assumption of flat annual funding at $15 million and the estimated carryover one-time funds of $65 million from fiscal year 2023. The overall budget for fiscal year 2023-2024 sets ambitious goals to continue the pace of high-quality growth. Calbright College continues to implement and refine a robust implementation plan covering January 2021 through December 2027. Next slide, please. Now is the, next is the budget presentation and timeline. Next slide, please. Board Policy 6200 Budget Presentation. This budget presentation fulfills the main objective of Board Policy 6200, where the budget process and timeline are presented to the board. Specifically, the annual budget shall support the college's strategic priorities. The assumptions are presented for board review. The timeline for the annual budget was presented in March of this year. The Chancellor's Office recommends a minimum of two months' worth of unrestricted operating expenses as a reserve. Any changes in assumptions will be reported to the board in a timely manner, and budget projections address long-term goals and commitments. Next slide, please. Now, this is the budget timeline. As I mentioned at June BOT Board of Trustees Draft Budget Meeting, the budget methodology was an extremely collaborative process where we, in the executive committee, had several meetings to plan, iterate, and revise the various assumptions, goals, and objectives for the 2024 budget year. As a review of the budget timeline, we have achieved the various milestones noted on this slide, with today's presentation culminating in the process. In March, we had a BOT meeting to discuss the budget process. The executive team met from March through May regarding the assumptions and the budget amounts. A draft budget for 2024 was finalized in May of 2023. A draft budget was presented to the board, excuse me, on June 21st, and all adjustments were included in the weeks preceding today's Board of Trustees meeting. Next slide, please. Next is the 2023-2024 final budget. Next slide. This budget is aligned with our, with Calbright's strategic vision. First bullet point, we add value benefiting Calbright students, the CCC system, employers, and the state. We focus on good jobs, prepare learners to secure and succeed in available jobs with career potential in stable and growing industries. Be responsive, keep improving in response to relevant changes in economic conditions, research policy, workforce needs, and learners' lives. We need to support the learner. We design to meet the specific needs of adults without degrees. Advance equity. We narrow the opportunity gaps by raise ethnicity, gender, income, and region. And final bullet point, align quality and growth. Grow enrollment while strengthening outcomes through high-quality teaching, earning, and student experience consistent with available resource. Next slide, please. Next is our budget assumptions. Next slide, please. There were three major budget assumptions which drove our budget process. We implement 10 new programs. The launch of the new programs is expected to be approximately $1.1 million. Expand operational capacity. The investment in new roles will approximately, approximate $8.1 million. And our final budget assumption is our partnerships with new and existing relationships are expected to be approximately $5.3 million. Next slide, please. So we're implementing 10 new programs, occupational clusters. As part of Calbright's strategic vision, we're launching up to 10 new programs designed specifically to prepare adult learners for good available jobs. These new programs fulfill gaps in availability and accessibility of high-quality, high-value training programs, providing working adults with affordable public alternatives. Each program will provide a specific skill set that employers want and which our students can directly apply in the working world. For many students, our programs offer flexibility for different roles within and across industries. So this slide shows how our 10 new programs are organized into five occupational clusters: computer technology, computer information systems, knowledge economy, design innovation, healthcare, and this. The 10 programs that we're launching in fiscal year 2024 are bolded in each cluster. For the computer technology cluster, we have the junior developer and network plus programs. Under knowledge economy, we have the entrepreneurship program. For the design innovation cluster, we have the user experience and user interface, along with 3D animation and game design. For healthcare, we have the licensed vocational nurse program. And for the business cluster, we have the HR talent acquisition, HR learning and development, data analysis, and project management programs. Next slide, please. Our second assumption is expanding operational capacity. Our second major budget assumption centers on expanding our operational capacity. A key component of Calbright's growth is ensuring appropriate staffing across all levels of institutions that we can continue to operate effectively as we expand during the immediate high-quality growth phase, as well as during the remainder of the seven-year startup period, which ends in 2027. A critical assumption to serving our expanding student population and their needs is having the people, expertise, systems, and technology needed to serve our students. A snapshot of departments projecting the largest hiring assumptions includes learning instruction department, which includes four department heads, five new faculty, and 23 adjuncts. In student success, many of these new roles are student-facing positions, such as 17 student support specialists and two student engagement specialists. In IT, the roles support the front and backend systems, as well as integrations for an improved student journey. These roles will support a student information system, a data repository, and a data warehouse for reporting and analytics. For the research and data strategy department, several roles are budgeted to lead Calbright into new innovative teaching models, support grant attainment, and assist develop new research projects. Next slide, please. Workforce partnerships, existing and new. Our final budget assumption slide discusses the bulk of our expenditures into existing and new workforce partnerships. These partnerships will focus on creating and expanding relationships with employers and industry. We'll also identify potential opportunities to launch new high-quality programs that are sponsored to adult learners and the labor markets in key regions of the state. We are meeting with economic development leaders statewide and in critical regions and exploring where and how Calbright can best add value now and over the next several years. On the left-hand of the slide, the program typically follows "Students Complete Flexible Pace Program." Calbright connects students with paid opportunities, and this results in two goals. One, employers can invest in underserved individuals, and two, students can get a position in industry role that they've trained for. The right side of the slide shows our partnership goals, which include expand relationships, identify new opportunities, and innovate to increase equitable access to good jobs. Next slide, please. So now, this is our final 2023-2024 final budget. Total revenues remain unchanged from the draft budget, which is of $16.6 million. We have updated the total, the local revenue, shown as $1.6 million, which represents the interest income of roughly $75 million held with Solano County. Going further down the expenditures, the academic and non-academic tolls reflect the increases in staffing mentioned earlier in the presentation. Benefit tolls are a result of the employer contributions due to statutory requirements, helpers, calendars, social security payments for the applicable employees. The other operating expenses and services are comprised largely of consultants, legal, and contracts. Capital outlay is comprised of two major factors, facilities and related regional offices, and student and computer equipment and software. The budget numbers reflect the various initiatives mentioned earlier in this presentation. Next slide, please. Our next slide discusses the 50% rule. One of the auto requirements for Calbright is the 50% rule. According to ED Code Section 84362 and California Code of Regulation 59200, each district is required to spend at least half of its current expenditures each year for salaries and benefits of classroom instructors. This slide shows the percentage breakout of the operating expenses categorization per the Chancellor's defined categories. The largest percentage is the other operating expenses at 35%. The second major expense is the salaries compensation of 35%, broken up between classified, academic, management, and confidential. The remaining expenses are employee benefits and capital outlay. So at this stage, Calbright's academic salaries are at 12% total expenses, which is up from the approximate 6% back in 123122. Next slide, please. Now, this slide shows the percentage breakout of the operating expenses with all student-facing roles such as faculty, students, support specialists, counselors, IT help desk personnel, et cetera, categorized as academic salaries. Based on this interpretation, the academic salaries increases to approximately 21% versus 12% in the previous slide. Next slide, please. So the next steps are: Finance Department will close the accounting records for fiscal year 2022-2023 and submit the year-end expenditures report to the Chancellor's Office. Staff will work with Calbright auditors for the fiscal year 2022-2023 audit by August, September of 2023. Next, next slide, please. So questions?
Thank you so much for your presentation. Colleagues, any questions or comments on the closed budget?
I see the assumption about the staffing levels and the eight-plus million dollars of increased staffing that we're anticipating this year. Is that split between Fund 11 and Fund 12?
Yes, it is. Certain roles are expected to be ongoing in nature, and certain roles are considered to be one-time in nature, especially in regards to a lot of the consultants that we potentially might use for program initiation. But yes, it is split between Fund 11 and Fund 12.
The only thing I'll say is that I am a budget nerd, and I love this presentation because, as was referenced by our CEO, it really shows that we are beginning to scale at a certain maturity. And when we started, often our actuals were really off-kilter from what we budgeted because we didn't have the systems and the processes in place as an organization. And now you're starting to see we're closing that gap that our planning, we're able to execute based on kind of some of the operational work we've done in the near eight years. So anyway, I think it aligns perfectly with what we talked about at the top of the meeting, which is a real maturity in the organization. So thank you. Is there any public comments on the, oh, sorry, poor member here. Thank you. So I'm not quite, yeah, this really is a constant. Sometimes I wonder myself.
So as we increase our, well, let me, let me, let me start by saying this. We just skipped over something in your presentation, which was now we can take the ORG off and put up the edu. And that's not a little thing, and so I just want to recognize that. Not that we were not legitimate all along the way, but these are small steps to let everybody else know that we're legitimate. So I just want to, I just want to kind of recognize that. Okay. So to the budget piece, as we are scaling, we are still looking at that 15 million. And I'm trying to figure out, and I'm not, I'm not, I am not my colleague, I am not a budget nerd. I am trying to sort of figure out, given that piece, given the increase in in program delivery and students, okay, we're, I see us moving exponentially. And given that, we sort of, do we hit a place, and what, and what is the timing of the place where our sort of restricted and our unrestricted will no longer serve us? And is there any projections relative to that as we sort of, sort of move on this sort of parallel?
Yeah, I think it's a great question because I think the way to think about it is what we have, we have about three years left in the startup period. And so the point of this is getting to a level of scale, getting to a level of understanding of our cost structures, our staffing structures, all of the things that are involved in setting up a new enterprise. And so we're maturing and progressing down that road. The other core part of that work, and this will be a core anchor, frankly, spoiler alert, in the strategic vision, will also be looking at the sources of revenue to drive that growth over time. And this becomes very important. Accreditation is an important step in that process because it opens up eligibility to different pools and resources to help us cover the cost of delivery to be able to reach more students. And a core other piece of that is, of course, the apportionment formula. And when we look at the efforts of Vision 2030 that the system has, when we look at efforts in the system to move all of us forward to, to continue to build in the space of competency-based education, it's absolutely contemplated that there will be a unifying apportionment formula that reflects this new model. And this new delivery model is not just about being online, as we know, it's about being a competency-based program. It's about offering the flexibility for a whole category of learners that we want to see in all of our institutions and that we want to see succeeding in all of our institutions. And so we will be very involved in offering whatever support, whatever data, and whatever learnings come from our understanding of how our next 10 program launches go that can, that can help inform that process. And I know there's a lot of great contribution that will also come from the wonderful institutions that are pioneering in the system in this direction in the CEE collaborative. So I think those are, those are a few different ways in which we will look at and think about how, over time, we can expand this model to serve more and more students, not just at Calbright, but up and down the system institutions. So that's, that's one big piece of revenue. And then the other piece, of course, is looking at all the different sources that we might be able to tap into in order to further scale operations, you know, that drive from a per-student basis. So all of those things are the next few years of work. And you're absolutely right that the point at which we kind of achieve that set of milestones and have set up the conditions for, for growing revenue into the institution, the broader our reach and the broader the opportunity for California to be.
Thank you for that. And so my, my response is, I think it's really important. So thank you for that. And so my, my response is I think it's really important as this, as we progress that we, that the board and trustees stay
Understanding.
Understanding sort of where we are in that process and the importance of the, of each of these steps. Let me also say that.
I will just add one more thing. Sure. We've been very intentional and careful about the growth and the size of our organization as well. We didn't do the same out of expediency where we spent out a lot of money really quickly before we had the plans and the direction and the strategy to execute on it. And so I'm very thankful to have had the board's guidance on that work and also it speaks to how critical it is to, to see the resources that have been allocated over the seven-year period, be able to be spent out over the seven-year period because this is the inflection point, the back half of the startup period.
I'll, I'll use a visual. This is not checkers. This is three levels chess. And so it's really, really important to see where those next steps are because we have to make them and sort of what are the, what are some of the barriers out there? And with that said, I really appreciate it, and I can't find it, but where, where it was outlined, where your presentation outlined sort of the more traditional look at sort of faculty salaries versus administrative, and they're sort of equalized on that traditional scale. But that second, that second chart is the, is the, is the chart that we, we need to continually keep our eye on. And that is that in this era of technology, not specific to, I, I know we're talking specific to Calbright, but all of our colleges, all of our sister colleges are dealing with technology and how to use it effectively in service to students. And, and then also in the workforce, there, there are, there are other constituency groups that are in service to students that are not recognized in that fifty percent law. And so to the extent, you know, I'm just going to put this on, on Calbright, and maybe that's unfair, but I'm going to, what I'm going to say is if indeed that we are really about research and thinking outside of the box, I think we need to continually lift up what the realities of this marketplace is relative to students and to student training, adult education in a, in a way that we get to see all of those pieces that are in service and not, and, and recognize them for what they are and implement them within our budget structure. Make it real.
Really being able to not just speak to the, but line items in the budget as they're traditionally called, but actually what institutions in our system and are trying to accomplish feels very important, largely because what it reflects is changing student needs and changing student demands. And every institution in the system and every CEO that I've talked to has, has, has a compelling case to make for how much learning came out of the post-pandemic period where there is just an acute understanding that we have to be much more services-oriented. We have to be able to resource our students differently. We have to be able to support them differently. And their academic success in our institution is not able to be decoupled from that. And, and I think the, the more that we start to see what it takes to deliver strong outcomes for a diverse set of learners that this system supports, the more we'll be, we get to see that. And then we absolutely have to have those conversations, and we have the benefit and the responsibility at Calbright to do it in a way that you can visualize and see the data. You can actually see directly where our investments connect to this outcome that we're trying to support for our students. And I, you know, I think that's a, that's a, that's a conversation that's, you know, the beating heart of, of most campus leaders that I'm talking to. Thanks. With that, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment. President Costa.
Hey, with that, I would entertain motion in a second.
Of Aguinaldo?
Name in seconds. Great. With that, please call the roll.
Phil de Guard Aguinaldo. Amy Costa. Pam Heans. And Bill Rawlings. Motion carries, President Costa.
Great, thank you. Continuing along in the action section of the agenda, we have item four point two, which is approval of a professional services agreement with Lightcast.
Check the time. Still, good morning. Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the board. Michael Younger, Vice President of Workforce Strategy and Innovation. I'm also excited to be joined by Ben Do, Director of Research, Data Strategy, and Effectiveness with our Workforce Strategy and Innovation team. And you may remember her from a previous board meeting earlier this year. We're here to seek approval for professional services with Lightcast, formerly M Z Burning Glass, to provide qualitative and quantitative research in support of a statewide impact study of government sector occupations and skills in the state of California. This proposed study is aimed at getting a better understanding of government sector jobs, particularly entry-level jobs, the skills required for those jobs and opportunities government employers have to expand truly their opportunities to, for skilled workers in the state that do not have a degree or credential. So this impact study has three primary goals. To produce research and data demonstrating true job and skill requirements for government sector jobs. Two, to identify key jobs and skills critical to the future of California government sector and identify opportunities specifically for adult learners and individuals from under-resourced and historically underrepresented communities. And finally, to produce a compelling and informative co-authored report that communicates the key findings from the research and encourages government sector employers to create equitable employment opportunities by leveraging a skills-based hiring approach. I'll now turn it over to Ben to provide a quick overview of the current landscape and opportunities for this study.
Thank you, Michael. Let's just say, good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the board. My name is Ben Do. I'm very honored to be back today to be able to share with you and talk about the overview of the work proposed with Lightcast and why we feel this is such a good opportunity for Calbright and California at large. Broadly speaking, we know that the degree requirement limits opportunities among skilled workers who may not have a bachelor's degree. We've seen that over the past decade, nearly seventy percent of new jobs that are posted are posted by employers and require a bachelor's degree. Further, with limited exceptions, government agencies also require a bachelor's degree to qualify for many jobs. And in California, what this might translate into is approximately one point six million job openings a year, including many entry-level positions that would be inaccessible to skilled workers who do not possess a bachelor's degree. These positions are often hard to fill, remain vacant, and creating stress and strain in existing workforce and potentially a loss of productivity for these agencies. In next slide, you'll see, in response to this tightening workforce, organizations are shifting to, to strategies to expand the talent pool and accelerate hiring time. One of these strategies is to turn to a skills-based hiring approach. And this approach focuses on shifting away from the traditional criteria such as education experience into focusing on assessing specific skills and competencies in, in order to help fill these positions. In a recent study from a national employers, they found that fifty-three percent of hiring managers say that their company eliminated requirements for bachelor's degree for many roles. And you could see here, companies such as Google, Bank of America, McKinsey have all been included in this trend. Carolyn Pierce, a partner with McKinsey states, there are a lot of reasons why someone might not begin or complete a degree, and it has nothing to do with the ability or potential. We know that there are better ways to screen for talent, and now we have the research tools to that. And next slide, you'll see that in addition to many private organizations, we see that states are starting to follow suit. In twenty-twenty-two, Maryland Governor Hogan signed into executive order to remove the degree requirement for most state jobs. And this was followed by Governor Moore signing it into legislation just earlier this year. There are a number of different states since twenty-twenty-two, fourteen, actually, that have been, have followed similar paths. These states include New Jersey, North Carolina, Utah, some that are actually not even highlighted on this map just because of the rapidness of the shift, including Arizona, South Dakota, Tennessee, Florida, to name a few. In April of twenty-twenty-three, we know that the California Department of Human Resources, as well as the State Personnel Board, revised minimum qualifications for the entry-level staff services analyst role in order to eliminate the need for a degree. The next slide, we see that given these observations and shifts, we're proposing to really do a deep dive into that the research study in order to understand California's government agencies, the occupations, and the related skills, honing in in order to understand the high-impact roles. We are hoping to engage directly with government agencies through qualitative and quantitative research and identify really informed practices that can highlight high potential for meaningful impacts in hiring. We'll leverage key relationship and strategic partnerships with regional partners such as those in Central Valley, in the Empire, and L A County to provide additional context in this space. And ultimately, in the next slide, and as Michael mentioned, we're hoping that we'll be able to produce a report that outlines high, the entry level, high demand, hard-to-fill positions, as well as skills that are well-positioned for California adult population without that bachelor's degree. We also hope to be able to understand, better understand how Calbright can continue to develop programs that can train a pipeline of adult learners who can help fill these positions and ultimately define, identify a set of recommendations and best practices for government agencies and other hiring entities. Thank you, and happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, any questions or comments regarding the presentation?
Okay, so. So are you, okay, so are you agnostic about what you're going to find, or do you have an idea of what you're going to find? And is this a jumping off place for identifying programs that might be helpful?
I think it's a great question, again, Michael Younger. We, we have some, some educated assumptions based on both our current engagements, right, with counties, but also our, our understanding of the labor market. What we know is that there's a high, extremely high vacancy rate for key roles within local and city governments, right? And so that's a known fact, some public reports, but also some relations that have also spoken true to that as well. And so because of that, there's a challenge to say, hey, how do I bring in folks from the community which are, you know, local and city governments and county governments are largely amenable to that? But how do I do that at scale? And so this would present an opportunity to establish a model by which they can address their current practices to open the doors, reduce the barriers, to ensure that they're able to at scale bring community members in. And so to your point, absolutely, we have some educated assumptions, but we really want to be very specific about the data and what the research can provide so that it's, it's, it's obviously a model for California, but it will form actually a national conversation on this topic. Where as Ben spoke about, states are leaning towards that direction, but you don't have any foundational research as to the why. We're, we're, we're wanting to build an understanding of the why so that, you know, California obviously can benefit from it, but obviously the national conversation can have some foundational backing on why, you know, this process, research, and eventually a process by which county and local governments can leverage is so important to the national dialogue. And then the only other thing I would say is it's also important to inform the lens of how you continue to establish equitable hiring practices, right? And taking full account for the kind of the twenty-eighty, where, where we talk about twenty percent of folks in the, in the United States have degrees and eighty percent don't. Are we building for the eighty percent or are we not? And so this research will hopefully help us be able to answer that question.
I'd love to add two points to this discussion that Mike and I have nearly daily. You know, one of the things that we've been really trying to understand is the behavior in the, in the hiring market. So there's a lot of discussion in this moment around skills-based hiring. And we have few and far between examples, usually of large name brand companies who are moving in this direction, very little clarity about what's actually conditioning hiring and whether these practices are leading to the equity solutions that folks think they need to. And so we've been looking at that and looking at the actions that have been taken, both in the public sector and other states and also by private sector employers, to really be able to understand where are the gaps in understanding on the data side, right? Where's the job task analysis that helps us understand these are actually what the skills are? And the, the best place to observe these is in public sector hiring. So this is, you know, an important foundational piece of research, as Michael said, largely because it really is the data that makes actionable the next set of activities on the skills-based hiring front. And it helps us obviously then think about how our programs align with that, or if there's any gaps in our programming that we should be focused on. That, that is absolutely true too, and I think you observed that, remember he's. But, but I think this is going to be important because it helps us measure the efficacy of some of these policies. And that's where we see opportunity with, with colleagues in other states to, to share our work.
So I, I didn't know how to comment on you. So at one point six million, that includes not just state, but includes local, and it also includes county? Okay, all right. So I worked at least two of those. So it's very, and it's very interesting, a comment that was made, and it was, it's having a degree's epoxy. And you only recognize that once you have a friggin' degree and how long it took to know that the job you're doing does not require that degree. Okay. And, and so, and, and I have said that on multiple times. So listen, I have the master's degree. It let me in the door to get the job that I didn't even need the master's degree to. And so I think we do need to come to grips with that because of that large group of population that will not have the, maybe it's not the wherewithal, their lives are, are not directed in, I've got to go to school in order to get this. And so I, I, I'm really happy that this indeed is happening. And I'm interested in, in find, in really finding out because, and then the other piece that, that kind of, and you don't have to answer this. As you look at this, especially relative to, relative to local versus county versus state, it seems like you're going to have to find a lot of common denominators as opposed to, you know, L A County saying, well, you know, we're different in, God, yes, they are. And I was born and raised there. But in order to do those jobs, are they so different than a Salinas or Sacramento or Tulare? And so finding that those common denominators will be very helpful relative to that. Anyway, those, those are my comments. It's an exciting puzzle. And if there are.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, absolutely, President.
So I've spent the majority of my adult life in the public sector, and so I'm really excited by this. And I think the data will be really interesting. I know from my friends in county land that they have many vacancies at the county level. And so I'm just extrapolating the state and the cities do as well. The only thing I will say that I think is the next phase of this work is that government, as the receiving entity, has some work to do too. And I know this based on data when I was at Alameda County. We had a very difficult time retaining millennials. You know, the generational gap between retention was significant. I think that's probably throughout the public sector. And I think, you know, there have been, you know, initiatives at the state level and otherwise, but I think the whole civil service process. but I think the whole civil service process is really confusing to most people. Things such as how long it takes when a job is posted until you're actually hired is significant. The job titles and classifications we use are like, they're not parallel in the private sector. So a lot of times, people might look at a job title and think, I'm not interested or I'm not qualified. And they really are. And then lastly, you know, government is many things. Nimble is probably not one of them. And so the expectations of employees and the culture of the workplace is probably not fully aligned right now. And so my hope is, is that once we get the data and move forward partnerships, that we explore that part too. And, you know, I mean, candidly, you know, they're great paying jobs. They have trajectories for professional and economic growth. And I believe in the public sector, so I love that we're doing this. I'll get off my soapbox.
And the millennials is really something really, really key. Because, you know, working in the legislature, we lose, the idea of work was, that term was defined very differently with younger, younger folks. So I think taking certain that, this research really takes into account the spectrum. And then if indeed we are going up into the marketplace, that is going to be the 25 to 38, 48, whatever those numbers are. And so having some actionable data on that would be very helpful.
We have a motion on the table, but we need public comment.
We do need public comment.
Is there any public comment on item 4.2?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Okay, colleagues in Southern California, we have a motion on the table. Do I have a second? All right, we have Rawlings with a second. With that, can you please call the roll?
Eldogard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Cam Haynes.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Costa.
Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it. Our next action item, 4.3, is another request to approve a professional services agreement with Arnold and Porter K. Schuler LLP. We found for Vice President of Government Relations.
Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, Board of Trustees, Jenny Johnson, Vice President of Government Relations. I'm presenting an item 4.3 to request approval of a professional services agreement between CalBright College and Arnold and Porter K. Schuler LLP, a full-service federal government relations and advocacy firm. As a way of historical background, the Board of Trustees has expressed strong interest in securing federal government relations and advocacy services at the federal level. Responding to that direction last winter, the college issued request for proposals number 22-001. Two firms submitted fully responsive proposals, which were evaluated by the evaluation committee, thanks for those that were on that committee, based on the following: our qualifications, necessary experience and skills to advocate for CalBright, evaluation of key personnel, responsiveness of the key proposals to the tasks to be performed listed in the scope of work, references and project costs compared with the level of effort to be expended. After all of that, Arnold and Porter K. Schuler LLP was selected by the evaluation committee as the best fit for CalBright's needs. The firm was also the lowest bidder. As way of background, this firm is one of the most respected government relations and legal firms in DC and has substantial nationwide and international presence. Engagement with higher ed was a key point as well. Its team includes professionals with experience working in leadership roles in Congress, state, federal agencies, as well as government relation roles in the private sector. To finalize this process, CalBright College is seeking to approve a professional services agreement again between CalBright College and Arnold and Porter for the term of September 1st, 2023 through August 31st, 2024, in an amount not to exceed $180,000 and to authorize CalBright College to approve amendments to extend the term of this agreement for up to four additional one-year terms under the terms and conditions specified in the agreement. Any questions?
Great. Colleagues, any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, are there any public comments on this item?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Right, colleagues, you know what to do.
I'll move.
All right, I have, I'm going to give Rawlings the first motion. I'll give Haynes the second. So that, can you please call the roll?
Eldogard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Cam Haynes.
Aye.
And Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Costa.
Great, thank you so much for the presentation. Moving right along, we're going to look at the item that was highlighted in the CDOS comments, item 4.4, which is to approve the learning engineering tools competition sponsorship. Have a strategic growth environment, Melissa.
Hi, and thank you, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the board. Last month, we were so pleased to share the progress on our UCI Irvine or UCI partnership work and how it epitomized how CalBright already works and who we are as an institution, student and equity-centered, focused on rapid prototyping, using data, and continuously learning and improving to better support our students. Today, we're proposing building on those capabilities and accelerating the reach of our innovative approach. Next slide, please. As Ajita framed so helpfully in her remarks, we are here today to seek your approval to sponsor a competition to spur the development of tools and supports relevant for our student population. This would accelerate work that supports students at CalBright across the California Community College System and nationwide. At a high level, competitions bring together the best minds to solve a certain challenge. This one is designed to leverage technology, data, learning science, and more to develop new tools for learning and to advance education research. Why a competition? This helps us accelerate the impact. With more tools developed at a faster pace, it leverages a proven infrastructure process, and it's done in partnership with a community of innovators. Why now? This is a key contribution to help CalBright scale, leverages our one-time funds for maximum impact, and it's a key inflection point in the technology field that we have the opportunity to influence. And why CalBright? So we had talked about, it builds on how we already work, is very aligned with our legislative mandate, and with our engagement would be centered on equity and the needs of working adult learners. And as we talked about, relevant to CalBright and to all California Community College students. And this is all in service of greater student outcomes. This competition builds on CalBright's leadership in the space. And while it may be newer, different to others, it's a continuation of the work for us and gives us an avenue to accelerate the scale and the impact. Next slide, please. I'll describe the opportunity itself more in the coming slides, but first just wanted to take a quick step back to start off with a strong connection to our founding legislation. Per CalBright statutory mandate, we are designed to innovate and help expand options for adult learners across the California Community College System. And our legislation also specifically notes, and these are direct quotes, "Research and development at CalBright should focus on using learning science, technology, data science, behavioral science, machine learning, and artificial intelligence to build out student supports and more." This sponsorship opportunity is directly aligned with these areas and more. Next slide, please. In addition to the alignment with CalBright's founding legislation, this sponsorship opportunity is also incredibly aligned with and supportive of the California Community College's Vision 2030. Tools for working adult learners are core to Vision 2030, and we have a shared priority on student outcomes and success and adult learners, and a strategic focus on the future of learning through tools, supports, and technology. The result of this competition would be relevant not only to CalBright students, but to students throughout the community college system and to the 6.8 million adults in California without a degree. Next slide, please. So there are a lot of ways to accelerate innovation. As we talked about, one really powerful one is a tools competition. And competitions are a common approach in both the public and private sectors. This competition aims to spur the development of innovative tools to support improved outcomes for our focus population of working adult learners and builds on the charge given to us in the legislation and Vision 2030. With CalBright's leadership and sponsorship, we'd center the competition on equity and the needs of our students, focus directly on the supports most relevant to working adult learners. And more broadly, we see this as an opportunity to leverage CalBright as an R and D lab since the challenge of serving working adult learners is growing throughout every community college in the country and the state. And given that there's an increased focus on post-secondary students who are adult and online, this truly has the potential to support and lead the way nationwide. Next slide, please. So what does this mean in practice? Our plan is to tap into an existing competition, the tools competition, in order to amplify our capacity and impact. It would be a year-long competition with a multi-stage selection process for finding the most promising innovative solutions relevant to our students. Judging panels would review proposals, and selection of panelists would be informed by CalBright and include members from CalBright, leading researchers, practitioners, funders, and more. There are three tiers of prize winners, 50,000, 100,000, and 250,000. And we anticipate there would be about five to 10 winners based on past experience. The 50,000 level would be for ideas that are in an earlier stage of development, and the winners at higher levels would be ready to deploy and scale faster. Next slide, please. This opportunity would spark innovative and tangible tools and products with a specific focus on supporting working adult learners. What's especially exciting is that it would lead to a greater volume of relevant solutions than we would be able to get on our own, developed at a faster pace to accelerate impact. It enables us to reach and engage new allies as just the exploration of this process has already started to do, bringing in new potential partners, funders, researchers, and more that I'll share a bit about momentarily. In addition, this competition is specifically designed to influence the field of learning science with benefits to researchers and practitioners far beyond the competition, all with a laser-like focus on improving student outcomes and in particular with our leadership for working adult learners nationwide. Next slide, please. Now, competitions usually narrow the field to a handful of winners, which we'll get. What's also especially exciting here is the learning that will be ongoing throughout the process and how there are many more benefits to us, to applicants, and to the field over the course of the competition and beyond. Some examples of the ways CalBright will benefit from the year-long process include shaping the competition. Of course, our North Star is our students, and with our participation, we'll ensure that the competition is centered on equity and the needs of working adult learners, and we'll help frame the opportunity, the priority, the rubrics, the panel of judges, the research partners, the learning opportunities for applicants, and more. And we'll have many opportunities for participation, engagement, partnerships. Through this work, we've already and will continue to surface new allies and partnerships to help bring a focus to the needs of working adult learners and the connections made with researchers, entrepreneurs, policymakers, advocates, philanthropies, and more, as well as the learning science and learning engineering community. And there's incredible visibility and thought leadership opportunities within and outside the competition, shaping learning opportunities for applicants and partners, along with connections that could surface future collaborations, pilot testing opportunities, and more. We'd be gaining insights throughout. We'd have access to all of the proposals, learning from both the winning participants as well as the non-winning applicants, and we'd receive reports on trends and insights to help drive learning and future efforts. And finally, the nationwide thought leadership. We'll have the opportunity to leverage this platform to raise awareness on the needs of working adult learners and bring the whole country together around this, further positioning CalBright's role at the leading edge of the learning curve for working adult learners in California and nationally. Next slide, please. Throughout this competition, we are in good company, along with leading and established entities from different sectors coming together with a shared mission and purpose. Through partnering with the tools competition, we'd be leveraging experts to amplify our capacity and plugging into the backbone of a competition infrastructure while helping the competition itself innovate. Anchoring this partnership is Georgia State University, or GSU. GSU serves as the official academic partner of the competition, bringing together technical research and operational capacity to competitors and organizing teams, as well as running the impact evaluation after the competition. GSU is the leading large public four-year institution on economic mobility in the country. They prioritize institutions getting better at supporting students, including through data-driven, comprehensive student supports, use of technology, and a focus on learning science and engineering. The competition organizers, the learning agency, are experts in running the competition, and they focus on areas such as marketing communications and recruitment, the application portal, and proposal reviews in virtual events, winner selection notification, all of the logistics that the competition really amplifies our impact and the efficiency and effectiveness that Ajita talked about, and ongoing community building. And other competition supporters and partners play a really important role as well. One example of that is Schmidt Futures, who established the competition, has brought their expertise and voice, and are providing ongoing funding. And many philanthropic funders have returned to support the competition each year. DARPA, the Defense Advanced Research Projects Agency, participated last year and is planning to sponsor again as a returning public agency. And other public entities such as the Office of Naval Research may join for the first time this year as well. And I can share that other organizations are truly excited to partner with CalBright, specifically to help spur innovations that will impact millions of adult learners. For example, Acem Collaborative, a newly formed nonprofit based at Harvard and MIT with an incredibly aligned mission and focus. And Ben Castleman, who we know well from our UCI partnership, who's been aware of this competition since its inception and is especially interested in joining as a judge and/or research partner with CalBright's engagement. Beyond the strong team and group of collaborators, let's take a moment to talk about the results of the competition previously. Next slide, please. CalBright's familiar with doing a lot of exciting work in a short timeframe. We're already at 3,000 students with an eye toward further scale, and we've seen how much can be done when we use innovative approaches centered on outcomes for students. Similarly, in the three years since this competition was founded, the team has already awarded $9.5 million to 80 winners. And as we talked about, the broader impact than just the winners, that 80 is out of 2,700 proposals received, all with a focus on student outcomes. The accelerated impact of this competition and with this team of thought leaders is tremendous. Let's take a moment to look at one example of a winning tool and then some trends across the winners. Next slide. Unlocked Labs is an example of a winning proposal from the competition last year. It's one of 30 winners out of 771 proposals. The prompt for this competition was to drive improvements in adult learning that boost middle-class wages. This team is building open-source tools to disrupt the cycle of limited access and data in correctional environments. Unlocked Labs has highlighted that employment and education are proven to be the most effective solution to reduce recidivism. This tool has been developed and tested by a team of currently and previously incarcerated individuals. Their tool proposal is an education access and management platform for correctional environments and is available without internet access, which they hope will increase access to education and improve outcomes for incarcerated students. And now, after conducting several different pilots this year, this team is starting to look at scaling their tools to a much wider audience of incarcerated students. This is one powerful example, and the trends across the competition are inspiring as well. Next slide, please. One of the additional benefits of being part of this competition is seeing the trends across and the relevance and transferability of the tools across years and focus areas as well. I'll highlight just a few for now, but there are many more that we can go into at a later time. In the adult learning competition sponsored by DARPA, there were winners focused on intelligent tutoring systems, simulations in labs, high-priority employability skills such as digital literacy. In the K-12 Accelerated Learning and Assessment Competition, there were winners focused on gamified content, virtual tutoring, empowering families and out-of-school learning. The competition organizers and researchers would share similar summaries of themes and trends for our competition, as well as across current and past competitions to maximize the shared learning and impact. Next slide, please. In addition to the internal sharing of lessons learned, the winners are lifted up far beyond the direct reach of the competition. Tools winners have generated attention on major platforms and media outlets, shining a spotlight on innovative tools, the focus population of students, the process of rapid cycle innovation, the role of learning science, and more. This further amplifies the visibility and awareness and the thought leadership nationwide. Next slide, please. And our final slide. As we talked about last month with our UCI work, CalBright's innovation has powerful effects for us and more broadly for the field. This is another opportunity to lead the way that starts with a built-in national platform and a frame of accelerating impact for students nationwide. This effort is incredibly timely. We are at a critical inflection point in the opportunity to help shape emerging technology and research. They're powerful tools to help us scale at this moment in our growth trajectory. And it's especially meaningful in our startup period, informing, forming our own product development journey and leadership, and helping us deploy our startup funds in high-impact and high- and helping us deploy our startup funds in high-impact and high-leverage ways that has both local and national impact and continues to position Calbright at the forefront of innovation. And the competition cycle starts in September, so we'd be just in time to influence the whole year ahead. Why this? This competition is especially aligned with our focus and legislative mandate. It helps accelerate development of innovative tools more and faster. And through this sponsorship, Calbright would partner with experienced competition operators and researchers with proven infrastructure and processes that help accelerate and amplify impact, moving us all further faster toward outcomes for students. And why Calbright? Our involvement is especially important here. We'd be centering the competition on equity and the needs of working adult learners, helping frame it in a way that can have an impact on Calbright students, students across the California Community Colleges System and nationwide, doing this all alongside a community of innovators, influencing and influencing and learning from innovators nationwide, and continuing to build on and broaden Calbright's impact at the leading edge of the learning curve. I know that was a lot, and very much welcome. Thoughts, questions, and look forward to continuing the conversation.
Presentation colleagues, any questions or comments regarding this item?
A comment or a question? I haven't decided which one yet. First of all, thank you very much for, to Marissa, for having such a high level of energy around this. I think she encapsulates how exciting this area of work is and certainly is representative of all of the energy that, that Calbright has to offer around really leveraging our tools towards helping working learners. So we have six point eight million adult learners. And the comment I'd like to highlight here is that no one can doubt that Calbright isn't all-in into making sure that these six point eight million working learners are getting attention and research and effort because this Tools Compass Competition essentially leverages an entire community of intellectual capital to solve for these kinds of problems, and it's just one of many initiatives, the UCI partnership included, to get at this problem. So it's just an incredible, like, on the macro level, such an incredible level of effort that Calbright is putting into solving this problem for these six point eight million adult learners, and certainly they deserve everything and more. I guess the, the question that I have is around the timeline because the, the previous agenda item on Lightcast, if I'm, if I'm getting this correctly, they're looking at a fourteen-week-from-project kickoff timeline. This one is a year. And I'm assuming that with both or with, with all of these initiatives, there are several touchpoints with Calbright to make sure that they're going in the right direction. Is that the case with this competition, or are they just going on their merry way for a year and then coming back to deliver whatever product they, they found to be responsive to the problem? And then as corollary to that, what is the expected next, next step? Meaning ideally, I think it would be wonderful for the winner to have some kind of plug-and-play model where all of a sudden we were implementing this program and, and there's a discernible tangible outcome that comes from it. But is that truly the case? Is there a risk that, you know, nothing could come out of this competition that would be helpful to us? Although I highly doubt that's the case. I'd, I'd love to know what happens two steps down the line from this competition.
Thank you so much, trustee Aguilano. So I will, I'll touch on each of those. First, the timeline. So the launch of the competition would be September twenty-first and deadlines for
This year.
Of this year. And we, we are, we rock and roll. And proposals abstracts, what happens in that, it's a three-phased process over the course of the year. So the first phase, participants get to learn, get to hear from us, get to hear from others, get to learn about the impact, learn more about working adult learners, learn more about Calbright, learn more about online education, and submit a shorter abstract by November tenth with a slight potential extension for a week to incorporate some other learn proposals. And then there's a next phase where they do a three-thousand-word proposal that is more in-depth. That happens in December, or they get invited to that and they turn that in in February. In April, there, that is narrowed down again, and there's an additional phase of finalists who are invited to pitch in front of a panel of judges. And based on that, where they get to interact with the entrepreneurs, askers, and really go in-depth before selecting the winners. And then not only are the winners selected at that point, there is then a product review day. So it's not just, oh, did you have a great idea? Here's the money, but also then you get half of it. And then the next half isn't released until after they see how people are doing it, that they're actually in process working on these tools and that they're actually in development. And so there's a very active and engaged process that whole time, including support throughout by researchers, by GSU, by other partners to help improve, make connections and improve the quality of the applications throughout. So it's a really robust process. We will be actively engaged, daunting as it might be, but the, with the launch timeline. The, but the, throughout the process, we are engaged in helping look at the framing of the opportunity, the rubrics, the selection of panelists, the technical assistance that is available for applicants and that helps them understand this population so their solutions are most relevant. So it is a really active and engaged process that we are actively partnering in, but also highly leveraged in all of the help that the competition organizers give. The risk that you, well, two, two more things. You asked about the next steps for the winners. So they will be, as we talked about, three different tranches of dollar size. Some will be earlier stage and some will be more ready to scale. What we're also really excited about here and that the competition has been amenable to is putting in what they call a supplemental award for those who are interested in piloting directly with Calbright. We will have first right of refusal, but anyone who says that they are interested in piloting with us, if they are a winner, will get to look at that and say, hey, could this help accelerate their development and the relevance of the tools to working adult learners to our focus population and therefore nationwide? And so we may be actively piloting, and even amongst those who don't win, we will also know who may be interested in piloting. Historically, you had asked about the risk too, about nothing helpful. Historically, there have been more good proposals that the judges wanted to fund than dollars available. And our dollars will be amplified in this because Schmidt Futures and others are coming in with more dollars that if there are more good proposals, they may be funded beyond what we are putting in, which is another really exciting factor. But on the rare, rare chance that there is nothing worth funding, that money would come back to us. But minus operational costs, but historically, there has been the, very much the opposite case where philanthropies and others have stepped in to fund beyond the pool of winners because there were so many good ideas and to fund other types of pilots and research, et cetera. Hildy, if I missed anything, please let me know, and I very happily dive in on any piece of the puzzle.
I think you got everything. I remember when a Tools Competition like this was supposed to help solve the traffic issue in LA. And maybe that's why I was a little bit skeptical of the outcome in here not being so successful. But hopefully that's a very rare, rare case.
Possible.
Thanks, Hildy. Any other questions or comments, colleagues?
My subduedness hides my excitement. My excitement in bay, while I ask my questions at least. So I wanna, so I'm a visual person. So I just wanna make certain that I especially understand the, the beginning of this process. And that is that we may have ideas, but we're gonna, we're gonna, what we, we're going to do are bring in others while we explain exactly what we've done, what our vision might be, where we think we might be wanting to go, and what the opportunities may be, and they're going to provide some feedback to all of that in context.
Yeah, I, I would add even, what are we, what are we struggling with? Where are the gaps in our understanding of knowledge? Where do we see opportunity, but also where do we see no solution in sight or in hand?
Good, because I, it, because we don't know what we don't, sometimes we don't even know what we don't know. And until we sort of, but putting all of that on the table, especially relative to a state as big as California, at a time where we're all struggling in this, in this space of what constitutes, what is defined as education, what's defined as training, and then the blurred lines of that relative. And then, and what, and yeah, and what does it now mean? What does it actually mean as we move forward? Because it isn't what we thought it was fifteen years ago, and, and we're still operating under some policies and practices that are a hundred years old, like the unit. It's a perfect one, a hundred fifty years old, we're so easy. Okay, so, all right. I guess that was really, I guess that was really the sort of the, the bigger, the bigger question so that I understood that. And then, so now, if you will now kind of explain, and I'm really sorry, but it was fast, you were fast, and so, but once we sort of, once it sort of gets into that piece and I'm trying to get the, the, where the those, those, what do you, is a term, but where you now have to do something. Like, for example, you, that three-thousand-word thing, okay? So there's this process of really sort of talking openly to the folks who can sort of help narrow what that three-thousand-word thing is going to be. And it, it seems to me it whatever that is, needs to unlock something critically. I haven't done, what effort will unlock what that product looks like. And I'm, I'm really, 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 really interested in that piece of it because whatever it is, I think it's critically important in California. I don't even, I don't even know what it is. So, so, but all along the way, including that piece, and then what? Then there's this other step. Now, after that, if we're still in, we're still in the running, what happens now then?
Um, yeah, so abstract, brief abstract first, sort of a binary yes or no by some reviewers. The ones who get a yes come in and submit the proposal you talked about, the three-thousand-word proposal. The ones that get a yes from that pool then come and pitch and actually present with their team of innovators, their partner collaborators or researchers to a panel of very experienced cross-functional sector judges who get to ask questions and prompts and get to really understand the tool they're planning to develop even more before. So that would be, if you're, if you're successful in that proposal, that three-thousand-word proposal stage, you get to come in and present even more detail. So each one is sort of appealing of the onion of more layers of detail that help the judges know the likelihood of the scalability, the impact of that potential tool.
And we should pause for a moment on the question of the judges because what we're talking about here is leading experts cross-functionally in the space, and I think that's critical to highlight. So these are folks that we have access to that are not just experts in running competitions, they're subject matter experts in these areas. So when we're talking about how these things get vetted, these are things beyond my depth, your depth. These are best in class, best in field. So the excitement of the, you know, Ben Castleman, who we have the privilege of working with in the UCI work, was the preeminent scholar in behavioral work in education, K-12 and higher it. And so those are kind of the folks that are attracted to this.
Okay.
And the partners that we have on the university level, the access that we have with Schmidt Futures and some of the others who are quite knowledgeable in this space and the benefit of past competition sponsors, the DARPA's of the world. Those are all, these are all access pools into networks of expertise that we would otherwise not have access to.
I'm really glad you could because my question was, will UCI be engaged or at least? Because that was my first introduction. Oh, we can do this online!
Yeah, and, and they're best to also understand. You know, they know us intimately. They understand the needs, the gaps.
Okay.
And, and they have the benefit of also knowing the field, right? What's missing from the field at large, right? What's a solution that we're not going to actually find from a vendor because it's not yet been created? Those are the kinds of things that we're after.
Is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Okay, with that, colleagues, this action is actually a three-part, so I'm gonna read it. Unique as is the Tools Competition. So the recommended action is to determine that the Tools Competition sponsorship serves a public purpose to approve the expenditure of one million dollars for the sponsorship and to authorize the president and chief executive officer to execute documents related to Calbright's sponsorship. With that, I'm happy to entertain a motion in a second.
I move the item.
All right. All right. With that, we have Haines with the motion, Rawlings with the second. Can you please call the roll?
Hildegarde, Aguilano.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Dan Hean.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Costa.
Great, thank you so much for the presentation. Uh, next up, we have our last action item, item four point five, which is to authorize the expenditure of funds for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four outreach plan.
Uh, good afternoon, President Costa, Vice President Aguilano, and members of the executive committee. Sprender O'Callaghan, Vice President for Marketing Communications and External Affairs here at Calbright. First, just wanted to express thanks, thanks for your flexibility as my wife and I adjust to the chaos of two careers and two children under three and being able to join you remotely today. Um, and so today I am coming to you to seek approval and authorization for funds that are already in my, my department's budget and Calbright's budget. We just need authorization of those funds. And so now that the budget is approved, we're, we're moving forward with that. And so what I'm seeking is, is functionally authorization of eight hundred thousand dollars for our marketing. That is a basically flat amount from the last three years, three fiscal years for us. And so we are, we are doing more and growing the college while also keeping our expenditures, you know, in line and, and flat. So what, what we're doing is becoming more efficient and more effective, which is, which is all great and what we're striving for. But, you know, in, in the presentation, I want to talk a little bit about what, what we've been doing because what we've been doing is going to look a lot like what we're going to do. So with that, if you go to the next slide, please. So big picture at the highest level here is that we're a new college. And, and so we are still building brand awareness. We're doing it at a statewide level. And we are engaging with learners who we know are the hardest to reach. And so, you know, a, as we do that, we want to be nimble and flexible. We want to test, refine, optimize. You know, and we, we want to develop a playbook through our startup period so that the VP of Marketing and Communications, who fifteen years from now, maybe it's me, maybe it's not, you know, has a full playbook and can carry on the legacy of the institution based on kind of the foundation that we built in these first seven years. You know, and then the other aspect of what we're doing is that we don't operate in traditional structure. We don't have, I would say, a, a true admissions department that is out meeting high school students at a high school, going to those kinds of fairs. Actually, we're, we're prohibited from doing that as part of our policy and, and place within the system. So, so, you know, our operations look a little different. And so with that kind of thinking about what we're trying to accomplish, what we want to do is keep, keep experimenting with our messaging. We, we, we have a, a good sense of what works well. And, and we've seen that through our enrollment growth over the last two years. But, but to keep testing, keep, keep thinking through what kind of messages most resonate and how can we quickly iterate and optimize throughout the fiscal year. We want to continue to grow enrollment that is in line with our mission and values. So that means enrolling students who are twenty-five and older from diverse backgrounds across the state. I'll talk a little about that later. And then also to, we're in our first fiscal year where we're going to be launching full public programs, which is very exciting. But also, we're going to have to understand and learn quickly how to best market those and be, kind of make, making adjustments on the fly as we keep optimizing. So I, I think we're going to, you know, reach four thousand students by the end of the year and, and five thousand, I would say, by the end of the fiscal year. And so I will, I will keep updating the board as we move forward with that. But if you go to the next slide, please. So as we know, as, as the Board of Governors is certainly aware and that enrollment across community colleges system has, has struggled. It's, it's actually on, on a long decline that's really stemmed from the great It's, it's actually on, on a long decline that's really stemmed from the Great Recession and, and was then amplified by, uh, the COVID pandemic. And, and as we've said, oftentimes, that adult learners were the group of students who left at some of the highest rates. And so this, this table illustrates actually that, that point exactly. You see, see not only new enrollment, uh, not coming in, but, um, you know, persistence rate, completion rates across the adult learners continue to struggle. Um, and, and that's really kind of, that's what we're focused on as an institution. And so that in comparison to Calbright's upward trend, you know, wh- when I started in July of twenty-twenty-one, we had four hundred and eighty-one students. And today, we're actually over thirty-two hundred. This figure, thirty-three thousand eighty-five was from the end of July. So it continues to go up, and we're seeing kind of five to seven percent growth each month. And that, that, of course, that, that percentage will diminish because the, not the number of new students is enrolling, but month over month, it's just going to be a smaller percentage. But, but we saw about a, uh, seven to ten percent growth each month over month last fiscal year. And so I imagine that will probably be in the five to seven percent, uh, for this next fiscal. And then our demographics, you know, continue to remain strong amidst this, uh, enrollment growth. You know, as we talked about, as, as former President Haines often talks about, our, our, our black enrollment is considerably higher than the rest of the system. Uh, and, and these are statistics that we're really proud of, but also ones that we want to pay attention to and, and keep, keep nurturing. You know, and, and so that we're, we're growing a student body that looks like the state of California. So if you go to the next slide, please. So, lastly, you know, on the demographic side is that we're growing statewide. We, uh, here's just some, some high-level statistics about where we are. But I, I gave a presentation on this spring to the board about, uh, some of our strategies. And, and at that point, I think we had forty-seven to fifty-eight counties represented in our student body. Today, we're fifty-one counties. So still a little bit more of a gap to close here, but, but every month, we continually improve. And not only do we want to have representation across the state, but we also want to look at our counties where there's lower enrollment, you know, less than ten students in, in a given county, and, uh, try, try and increase that, right? It's not, I mean, going from zero to one is, is fantastic from a representation perspective, but, but we, we want to be engaging with learners where they are and, and let them know about Calbright, which is a struggle because, well, it's not a struggle, but a, a challenge in that Calbright does not have a name where you would, uh, kind of stumble across it if you were looking for a community college in your area or something like that. You, you wouldn't Google Calbright College randomly. Whereas you might Google, uh, you know, San Francisco City College or something like that, or Community College in San Francisco, and you would just naturally come across something that is geographically named. So, so that's that. So, yeah. So if you go to the, uh, next slide, please. So, thinking about what's, what's working for us, um, and, and a lot of things are working. And we're also quick, quick to adopt what's working and, and drop what's not working. And, you know, for example, we, we stopped advertising on Twitter last fiscal year, mainly amidst, amidst the chaos of the platform. We, we just, it wasn't something that we wanted to participate in. Yes. The, the artist formerly known as Twitter. So, but what I will say is that what, what we're doing is not only building better marketing infrastructure, but we're building a better holistic system, right? When our students come to Calbright now, they're enrolling in, in a, in a college that has a ninety-four percent persistence rate from first term to second term. That's compared to about a sixty percent persistence rate across the California Community Colleges System for adult learners. So stu- students are entering into a better, more nurturing Calbright than, I would say, the Calbright of, of three and a half years ago. Um, and, and so that, that speaks to kind of the, um, the, the backend strength that our marketing can rely on. So we talked a couple of months ago about our new website. We had almost a thirty-seven percent increase in, uh, page views, uh, this past fiscal year. This is largely because of the new website and a seventy-two percent increase in organic search traffic. Those are fantastic metrics and, and great improvement. They're also, it's, they're organic measures, which means they were free. It's, it's people naturally coming to Calbright as opposed to clicking on an ad and going to our, to our website. And I would say that if you look at our website, the, 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 it, it's a nurturing kind of welcoming experience. It's also one in which we are able to, stu- interested students are able to express interest and, uh, give us their, their contact information. So even if there wasn't a good fit for a program right now, and they thought, well, I'm interested in Calbright, but this isn't perfect for me right, right at this moment, we're able to then keep them in our system. And so when we have a data analysis program launching in September, we can go back to them and say, hey, we're, we're launching this new program, would you be interested in this? And, and so those are areas of opportunity for us as we move forward, as we launch new programs and continue to nurture those leads that are in our system. What we want to do is capture that information before they move to CCC Apply, because once they go to CCC Apply, they're, they're gone to us in, in limbo. And so, so that's a really important, uh, new, new tactic that we implemented, um, this past fiscal, um, and a little before then. And we also launched a, uh, new campaign, College Reimagined, and these are just a couple of examples of kind of how we're approaching that. And what we did is we took, we took an approach of how, how can we create a campaign that, one, shares the story of Calbright? Two, does that story very quickly and very efficiently? And three, creates the opportunity for us to quickly change and test. We can do things like test, remove the strike-throughs and just have the positive language in there. We can change the language in the positive language. We can change the language in the strike-throughs. We can change color. We can change font size. All of those things are, allow us to test and, and understand how people are finding us, what kinds of messages resonate with them, and then also change our, not change, but, but update our, 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 our content that we're, that we're creating in our blog and in other press releases and such, so that it matches those messages. Because that's when you really kind of catalyze the marketing machine, is, is when your website is working with your ads and working with all of the language so that it's all connected. So if you go to the next slide, please. So these are just more creative examples. And, and we're, we're, we've been experimenting on, on a lot of different mediums, platforms, and, and different kinds of advertising. I'd say YouTube is one that has actually been very effective for us. LinkedIn is a new platform that we've been experimenting with, and it's not, I would say, a platform where we are going to invest heavily, but I think it plays a role, especially as we think about some programs like data analysis in which, you know, you, you're, you're a sales force administrator, you might be interested in, in data analysis to advance your skills. You know, a, and, and so you might be active on the platform. And then responsive display, one of the things that we're finding is that, you know, in, in the Google universe, which is, you know, display ads, it's paid search, it's, it's YouTube, that, uh, you know, in that universe, if, if people are looking and showing aptitude towards something like Calbright, we're able to reach them in a couple of different locations, which, which is, um, I think, very, very helpful. So if you go to, uh, the next slide, please. So thinking more tactically about this, paid search on, on the left, Google search was, was by far the, the best driver of enrollment and overall conversions for us. We had an eight percent conversion rate on our paid search campaigns versus about a three-point-four percent industry standard. So that, that's great. I would say paid searches, uh, for those that, um, don't live and breathe this daily, is, you know, when you Google search for California Online Community College, a, a Calbright ad will, may, may pop up if you, if you meet certain parameters that we are, uh, focusing on. So with that, what we also want to do is create a surround sound environment where that same person who's searching for that might see a Facebook ad about us, or might see, when reading an article, uh, a display ad pop up that just reinforces the message of what Calbright is. And, and so what that does is it, it validates our message and, and also stays, stays within a person, the back of someone's mind. You know, it takes several touchpoints to, um, have someone actually convert and maybe think, okay, let me, let me, let me give Calbright a try. Let me, let me talk to them. Um, and so in addition to that, we're launching more organic, um, components. Like we talked about information sessions, which have had a very good, um, conversion rate. I think about a forty-two percent conversion rate for students, interested students who attend an information session. They have the chance to meet with their support team, um, and the support team at Calbright, and then, um, forty-two percent of them actually end up enrolling. So all of this speaks to a holistic approach in that, you know, we have a holistic approach to the student journey. Once you're a student, we also have a holistic approach to, you know, he- helping interested, uh, Californians, uh, enroll in Calbright i- if it's the right fit for them. You know, and then kind of here at the bottom, I want to talk a little bit about just some, some of the things that we, we want to keep paying attention to. Spotify, we've done some very minimal ads on in the past. I, I think it's a good area for us to explore. Streaming video in general, YouTube launched a YouTube Shorts, um, because, uh, platform that, that I think is, is helpful for us. You know, there's streaming video, there's Hulu now, YouTube TV, the, these much, much kind of broader enterprises that the, the, the environment is, is evolving very quickly. Um, and, and we want to be able to test, see, see how our message resonates on those platforms, if those platforms are engaging with our, the right kind of learner for us. And then, um, you know, be able to nimbly and quickly design campaigns and move forward with them or not. So if you go to the next page, please. So this, this is the, the last slide, and as I talked about in my, my first, uh, you know, the intro slide, is that what we functionally want to increase brand awareness and understanding of Calbright. Right now, our strategy to do that is to grow enrollment. Um, as, as we grow enrollment, we will increase brand awareness. There may be a time down the road where we want to do more broader holistic brand awareness campaigns. I don't think the time is right now for that. I want to be able to track all campaigns, and oftentimes, brand awareness is something that's difficult to track. It is billboards in, or signage in LAX. I can't track how effective that was in pushing students into Calbright. But I can track, uh, terms within our paid search campaigns. I can track responsive display. I want to, uh, stand up a, a unique, um, paid search campaign that reaches out to all the counties that we have low enrollment in or that we have no enrollment in to, um, you know, close that gap between, uh, uh, our, our, our higher enrollment counties and also to ensure that we have full statewide approach. Um, and then I want to build our organic marketing footprint so that it complements our paid marketing efforts. Anything that we can do on the organic side will make our paid search more, uh, efficient and, uh, and, and more effective. And we're seeing that, we're seeing that, especially with a lot of the press we've been getting recently. Moving over to dot edu elevates Calbright in, in terms of the Google algorithm. A dot edu has, has more power than a dot com or a dot org. So that's really exciting, I think, from an organic perspective. And then also, we'll continue to see that accreditation was big for us, uh, and we'll be able to, to really transition over our entire digital enterprise to, uh, to this dot edu. You know, and then lastly, we're going to keep testing, experimenting. I, I feel like I've said, I've said that quite a bit, uh, and that's, that's really, uh, the, the, the point of what we want to be doing, you, you know, in, in this next fiscal year, as we, as we launch new programs, nurture those programs, uh, and then continue optimizing in our legacy campaigns. So with that said, this, this is a unique, um, ask for me because historically, we've had a marketing firm. This year, I'm coming to you with, without a marketing firm of record. I, I am, a, above all else, uh, the, the son of a father who was raised, youngest of six, raised by a single mom, and I, and I don't like spending money. And so I, uh, we, we don't have a marketing firm this year in the, uh, interest of being more flexible, more nimble, and being able to quickly iterate, not have to go through an intermediary to launch our campaigns, manage our campaigns, and, uh, functionally stand up things like new landing pages for new programs. So what that did is it reduced costs on the services side quite a bit. But it also, um, creates a different environment where we're going to now be paying Google and Instagram and, uh, you know, LinkedIn directly as opposed to a marketing firm doing that for us, um, and kind of serving as a pass-through. So, um, you know, with this, what, what I'm seeking is, is authorization of these eight hundred thousand dollars for, for advertising spend, the majority of which will be used, about six hundred and fifty thousand, would be used in the, uh, Google universe, that is YouTube responsive display, paid search, um, and a couple of other components within Google. And then the remainder will be spread across a variety of platforms. All of those platforms more than likely will be under the hundred thousand dollar threshold, but I thought it was important to, to come to the board with, with a presentation about, about our plan. One, in the interest of transparency, but, but two, to, uh, sh- show the effectiveness of what we've been doing, you know, and, and also to, to promise to, to come back, uh, a couple of months and, and report on, on how, how the new fiscal year is going. So with that, I'm, I'm happy to clarify anything, answer any questions.
Thank you so much, colleagues. Any questions or comments regarding the presentation? Yeah.
So, um, thank you for the, um, the presentation. And I was, I was wondering, I had a note to self was, um, bringing it in-house. And so now I understand what, kind of what that means. So I, I guess what I'm wondering is, um, trying, trying to ensure that you have the capacity, not as an individual, but that the unit, um, has the capacity, wants to monitor, and, um, to ensure that what we think we're getting, we are actually getting, and that some assessment is made along the way, that if there's tweaks or a movement in some other direction, that here, you, you're gonna, you, you'll be able to be agile and flexible about doing that. I heard, I heard that that's one of the goals.
Yeah, that, that is absolutely the goal, is, you know, for example, to sta- stand up a, let's say we want to cre- create a, a new piece of creative. You know, in, in a firm environment, and this isn't really, I, I, I don't, I, I, I really enjoyed the, the firm that we had, but ul- ultimately, what you do is you, you talk to your account executive, and we talk about X, Y, and Z, and you do some onboarding and exploration and research about it. And then they give it to their creative team, and their creative team comes back to you a week later with a draft, and then you go back to them, and there's a back and forth, and you're like six weeks in before you've actually stood up and launched anything. And I, I don't like that. I, I, I want to, I want to move a little bit faster. And so that, that is really the impetus for this, is to be able to monitor weekly and say, hey, well, this is doing well. This isn't doing well. Let's tweak, let's, let's change our approach. We have this new program coming up. Let's build some, um, you know, content around it. What are the search terms that are performing really well in our paid search campaign? How can we take those terms and, uh, mo- move them into, let's say, blog content? And those are areas that, uh, I think we'll be able to do much more efficiently, uh, in-house.
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Seeing none, I'm willing to entertain a motion in a second.
Bill, do you want to move, or do you want me to move?
Aguinaldo, I'll move. Had to move closer to the microphone to make sure you heard me.
Oh, yeah, we heard you. Okay, uh, do we have a second?
Eight seconds.
All right, Aguinaldo with the motion, Haines with the second.
Phil de Guard, Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Cam Haines.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Costa.
Next, we're on to, uh, section five in our agenda, information and reports. And we have up first, item five point one, the milestone report and fiscal year update.
Okay, I, I was the, the caboose of the action item, and I'm, I'm the front engine of the, uh, informational, uh, uh, agenda here. So again, uh, good, good afternoon, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, members of the Executive Committee, Sprender O'Callaghan, Vice President, Marketing Communications and External Affairs here. So for those, uh, on, on the board who, uh, this is maybe the first milestone report that they're seeing, a little bit of background here, is that every year, as, as President Costa said in her opening remarks, the legislature, uh, our founding legislation requires that we provide a report on, uh, basically our accomplishments over the past fiscal year. Our, the fiscal year is also the academic year. Uh, and, and so th- this is, one, that report, but two, an opportunity for us to talk about our growth, especially in the early years of Calbright. And, and the, our founding legislation has a variety of milestone requirements that we, uh, must, must meet in any given fiscal year. And, 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 you know, things that we actively track towards and mo- move, move towards accomplishing every fiscal year. Some of them are more broad, like enrolling students in your programs. Some are more specific, like design and validate sixteen programs by July first of twenty-twenty-three. Um, and so to, to, to cut to the end, we accomplished every milestone. We either met or exceeded every single milestone. Um, and so, so that's, that's the great news. Um, and so with that, um, can we go to the next slide, please? So he- here, this year, there was four ma- main milestones. One was design and validate ten additional programs for a total of sixteen. One was design and validate 10 additional programs for a total of 16. And for the other component of this is that for every 10 programs we design and validate, one must be developed with another community college. And we'll talk a little bit about where, what we did there. We had to enroll students into the colleges program pathways. We just talked about that. We've seen exceptional growth, 167% enrollment growth this past fiscal year. We had to adopt an effective process for developing new programs that will benefit and provide job market value to our target population. And we had to incorporate student feedback to improve instruction, technology, and student support services. So you can see is these milestones, while in our founding legislation, are also core to our operations. We spend every day incorporating student feedback into our instruction and operations technology. So, you know, with that, a couple of just high level things, like I said, 167% growth over the past fiscal year. We had the highest number of certificates awarded this past fiscal in our history. It is a short history, but 170 certificates is a fantastic number, and we're seeing that number continue already this fiscal year. So I expect that we'll beat this handily by this time next year. You know, and then we designed and validated 17 programs in total, actually. And those have all been approved by our Board of Trustees. So if you go to the next slide, please. So again, first requirement, design and validate 10 new programs. So you go to the next slide. So as a refresher, our initial cohort of programs was cybersecurity, IT support, medical coding. Those were launched back in October of 2019, right before the COVID pandemic began. And then, under President Menon, we launched a CRM program in the summer of 2021. That was our first new program under new leadership. And that has grown from a program of pilot of about 50 students to, I think, we're just about 700 in that program these days. So we've seen really fantastic growth there and a lot of interest. And then we have data analysis coming. Our first onboarding session will be September 13th. So we're going to have an announcement about that and a full, full marketing endeavor there as well. And then on the right here is just a full list of all the programs that have been designed and validated. They all add up to 17, I promise. So if you go to the next slide, please. So I mentioned that we need to co-develop one with a traditional community college. And we are really excited to share that and we launched a partnership with Bakersfield Community College. We did a soft rollout of it. If you saw our newsletter from the end of this past quarter, we briefly mentioned that we're going to have a formal announcement the week after Labor Day about this partnership, what it is. And I want to give all of the kudos to Tamika Connor, Michael Younger, and Shannon McCarty, who led this initiative and partnership with Bakerfield College. And what it is, is Bakerfield College is standing up an apprenticeship program for a data analyst apprenticeship program. That is a 12-month paid apprenticeship. And our program is serving as the pre-apprenticeship training for that. So a student who maybe has no experience in this sector can enroll at a Cal, in the Calbright's data analysis program, complete it, and then if they desire, matriculate into the Bakerfield College program. That program, the Bakerfield College program is also online, so it's not geographically bound. It's not just for students who are in, geographically able to go to Bakerfield College. And so this is a fantastic earn and learn training program and really kind of a proof of concept in how we can approach and work with other community colleges, as just but one example. So really, again, you know, major kudos and hats off to the team that stood this up. We're going to have a press release about this the first week after Labor Day. And really excited to see it come to fruition with the launch of our formal data analysis program in mid-September. So if you go to the next slide, please. Okay, enrollment, we're supposed to enroll more colleges, more students into our program pathways. If you go to the next slide, please. So I don't want to recycle all the things that I just said, but here's a graph of our enrollment growth. We've seen continued and sustainable enrollment growth. And what I would say is that what's really key about this, I think, is that, so about 88%, almost nine in 10 of our students cite our model, and that as the reason they were able to enroll at Calbright. And that statistic has remained fairly stagnant and in a good way. You know, over the last year and a half. And so what it speaks to is the power of our model. I would say, you know, oftentimes people say, oh, well, you're free, you know, it's easy to enroll students. And that's not quite the case, and it's certainly not supported by data. About 60% of students say that our low-cost tuition model is, and free right now tuition model, what was the primary reason. So you have 88% saying Calbright's flexible model, you have 60% saying, you know, our free tuition. So that's, you know, both are valuable, but I would say that's a profound statistic to think about. The overwhelming majority of our students are coming to us because of our flexibility, because of competency-based education. So if you go to the next slide, please. Okay, so the third requirement, develop an effective process for developing new programs that will benefit and provide job market value. So if you go to the next slide. Okay, so, you know, we talked about Brenda a lot, and she is our North Star. Our equity-centered design process keeps Brenda the center of all decision-making. What we think about from a marketing perspective, how will Brenda, you know, approach this? What we think about from a student engagement perspective is how can we support Brenda? And so all of our programs are informed by labor market information as well as employers and industry. We talked about this a little bit when the Lightcast PSA earlier. You know, and so what I would say is that we're still early in our timeline here at Calbright. And so we're taking all the steps necessary to truly track labor market data. What I would say is that that's something that higher education as a whole struggles with. And so we have taken the steps to be added to Launch Board, which will use, you know, tax information to track labor market outcome and is used across the community college's system. You know, but that's just one tool in our toolbox here. We're also, so in the interim, we're relying on alumni survey data. And as we generate more alumni, you know, the survey data will increase in N size. But still, what we're seeing is very promising early trends. 100% of our alumni say that they were satisfied with their studies. And that supports what our current students say, which the overwhelming majority say, yes, I'd recommend Calbright to a friend. 69% of our alumni completed the survey, reported being employed after completing their program. 54% indicated that had a positive impact within a year. And then 24% actually said, hey, within three months of completing my program at Calbright, I had a positive labor market, you know, outcome, which is fantastic, especially at this early stage to see those figures. And just for context here is that across the system, the community college's system, the numbers is between 25 and 30% of adult learners who are unemployed when they enter their community college are then, after they graduate, become employed. So we have 30, you know, 25 to 30% versus, you know, 69%. You know, a Calbright. And what I would say with a little bit of a grain of salt here is that it's not quite tracking the exact same thing. I'm not, in that, the system-wide metric is just, were you unemployed? Did you become employed? And was attending a community college in the middle of that? And what we are looking at is more positive labor market outcomes, which we are allowing students to define in their own context. That could be a working parent who works in the service industry and gets their schedule every Sunday for the week ahead and cannot schedule adequate childcare every week because they don't know their schedule until the day before they're working. That's, that, that parent might still be making the same amount in a new job, but now they are working a standard schedule that's predictable and the same every week. They have vacation time, they have sick time, and that's really a profound, you know, positive labor market outcome, even if it looks a little different than just the binary unemployed to employed. So that's kind of a little bit of context around this data. So if you go to the next slide, please. So here are just a couple of our student stories. You know, Alana, we've talked about in the past, she's moved to California, could not finish her degree or her bachelor's degree, and so she enrolled at Calbright and was able to get a CompTIA certificate through our IT program and has actually had two promotions and is now standing up a new office for her current employer. Right now, Williams is another student who had trouble in getting traction in the job market. So he came to us and enrolled in our cybersecurity program, and now he's working as in the cloud systems. He actually got a job just as he was ending his program. So another great success story. And then David, on the other side, he had moved around from other colleges. He had struggled in the for-profit sector and he was able to come into Calbright, have success, and work with career services, got his resume updated to kind of transfer his real skills into an application that is transferable in the professional world. And now works at a company that provides cybersecurity training. So these are just three examples. And actually, a major shout out to Jeremy Cox, our student body organization president, who is speaking with a reporter later today about his story at Calbright. So again, we have student stories across the college that I really animate what we do every day. So if you go to the next slide, please. So lastly, is incorporate student feedback to improve instruction. So if you go to the next slide. So we talked about this a little bit in a recent board meeting about our work with UC Irvine and Ideas 42 and the timelines. And so I won't, I won't belabor that. But what I will say is that learning and improvement is a core component of what we do. It's a core component of our operations and mission. We are an institution that, what we don't want to do is just improve on the margin, move things one to 2%, right? We want to actually foundationally implement a system of rapid improvement, of rapid iteration, so that we can look at a problem, always be questioning, are we working in the best, most efficient, most practical way possible? And then change our operations accordingly. And that's going to be a constant component of what we do at Calbright, I see for the foreseeable future. You know, and then also to garner consistent feedback from students. One of the things they talked about, as we've discussed, is that flexibility is the main reason why we wanted to go to Calbright. But it's also a double-edged sword in which sometimes a little too much flexibility can slow me down. And then I'm discouraged about, I'm not on track, or I don't know that I'm not on track. And so what we did is implemented, you know, timeline program, pilot in our CRM program to really see, does creating a more structured timeline that is non-binding, so students still have flexibility within that timeline and can adjust their timeline as needed, does that have an effect? And what we found is that there was quite a profound effect and positive benefit for students that existed, that exist in that pilot versus non-participating students. So that is just one example of the things we do on a daily basis to improve. And we will, of course, be bringing more of those improvements and optimizations to the board, you know, as research programs complete. So if you go to the next slide, please. So again, this is an illustration of that data. And what we see on the blue line is the percentage of coursework that students in the timeline pilot had completed versus students that weren't in the timeline pilot. And there's a pretty big delta between the two. It's not that the students that were not on the pilot weren't making progress. It was just that those in the timeline pilot were making more consistent progress at the end of a, you know, eight-week, 10-week period. So if you go to the next slide, please. So here's some student feedback from that. It was overwhelmingly positive, which is fantastic to hear, but also we want to incorporate that student feedback and then understand their mindset and point of view as they're engaging with us. You know, they're asking for us, the student, they says, to help keep them on track. And as you can see, there is nothing but adoration here for our staff and faculty who are engaged with these students and supporting them. I think that's something you see across the board in alumni surveys, student surveys, the student services team and holistic support team is beloved by our students, which I think is fantastic. So if you go to the next slide, please. So again, to close, where Jida actually opened in her opening remarks is that while 2022, 22, 23 fiscal year was by far our best, I think it will live in the shadows of next year's success. That's what she said in June, and shortly after, you know, we gained accreditation. We have new programs on the horizon here and really excited for what's to come in this next fiscal year. And I promise to come back next summer and give the highlight view of our milestone report for this next fiscal year.
Great, thank you for the presentation. Colleagues, any comments or questions on the item? Yeah, yay, we're happy. Is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Great, thank you. Good news is good news. Take it and run. Next up on our information reports, we have our standing item of 5.2, reports on contracts and purchases.
Good afternoon, everyone. So for the month of July, we had 11 contracts totaling $845,098. And we had purchases totaling $546,577.81 for the month of July.
Great, thanks. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Any public comment on the item?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Thank you so much. Next, we're moving on to the constituency group reports. And we're going to jump down to 6.4. The other constituent groups do not have a report. But we do have a report from our Calbright College Student Body Organization. Dr. Jeremy.
Hello, sorry, I was actually just going to try to do that interview really quick. I'm multitasking here a little. Hello, everyone. Yes, this is Jeremy, Student Body President. Thank you so much for having me today. And I apologize again, I had the, I had my report up just a second ago, and then it went away, so bear with me here.
You missed it. Board member Haynes said that's her life, Jeremy. It's sort of mine too, so don't worry.
Say that again?
Both board member Haynes and I were commiserating with you. That's sort of our life too, getting caught between all the documents and the windows open.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a struggle for sure sometimes. Okay, so, oh gosh, where are we? My apologies for not being prepared. I have two accounts also, which makes it kind of a challenge to pull it up so quickly. Okay. Thank you. Is there any, but any other reports that can go just before me, and then I can, I can get back to this?
You're the only constituent report we have agendas for today, Jeremy.
You're the most important, Jeremy.
Oh, I appreciate that so much. Thank you. It's so interesting how I had it open, and I don't know where it went. Okay.
Go to the agenda, and it's written there on the item.
And you know what? I had that pulled up also, and for some reason, that has also gone away. So. Okay, so. Let me see if this is going to pull up this time. Yeah, it's it's not letting, oh, mate, I think we're, I think we're cooking with gas now. All right. My child was taking a nap on me also, so I was, I was all over the place, but here I am. And thank you very much. My name is Jeremy Cox. After that short delay, I'm the CCSBO president, and I'm going to be showing the August constituency report for the Calbright College Student Body Organization. We continue making huge strides as we, as we held our first SBO meeting for the second term, we started our meeting by introducing the members of this team and the Office of Student Engagement. We also discussed the launch of clubs by the Office of Student Engagement. We're looking forward to the launch of the clubs at Calbright to enhance the student life here, here on our virtual campus. I'd also like the highlight events hosted by our SBO. The first that we've established is a monthly diverse stability event that's hosted by Chief Executive Assistant Ellen Martinez and Himani Tawari. This series is for students and allies to make friends, support one another, and share resources. The Office of Student Engagement watched Teachable Moment Series with Mecca La Kiriana, she's our SBO Vice President, where we learned about Indian music. We also had a live performance from Meck and her music students. That's all I have for this month. This will conclude my constituency report. Thank you and have a great day. And in closing, I can also say, this is probably one of the most exciting Board of Trustees meetings that I have attended in regard- Board of Trustees meetings that I have attended as, in regards to all the great information that's being handed down right now. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Jeremy. Always a pleasure to see you and we appreciate your reports. With that, um, we are to the public forum portion of our agenda. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
All right, the business of the Board of Trustees Executive Committee is now complete and we adjourn. Thank you for your participation.
Thank you.